Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council Special Meeting. Today is Monday, July 24, 2023, 6:00 p.m. The purpose of the meeting is for the council to review the Charter Revision Commission's final report. So I call the meeting to order. Before we get into the motion to accept the work that has been done by the commission, I would like to, again, thank the commission for all the work they have done. They spent many hours and months working through the document, and they made some very needed changes. And I do appreciate the time and their thoughtfulness that they put forward to get this document done. And it was in a short period of time, but they did excellent work, and I want to thank them for that as well. All right, so before we actually go into the motion to approve the sections of the charter, I would open it up to the council for any comments they may have before we get into the actual motion to approve. Does anybody have any comment regarding the work before us?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary.
Well, I certainly intend to vote for approval of the five changes that are listed here. I think the commission did a very thorough, very thoughtful, careful job. And I know they debated, you know, many things in terms of what to change, what to perhaps include or not include. You know, some of these are, you know, fairly simple changes. But there's, you know, there's other ones of substance. We certainly know from our experience that the residency requirement for town manager was something that we really had to take a look at and change, which they are recommending. Due to, you know, our times have changed in terms of modes of communication and being available 24/7, which isn't always wonderful, but it is easier and it is possible. So that, I think, was a very, very important one. In terms of the gender references, obviously, I did go explain at some length last Monday why I favor that change. And again, I think it's something whose time has come, and we need to do that. I cited various things, you know, that in Connecticut, obviously, you can choose different options for both your birth certificate can be changed, you can get different options on your driver's license. The U.S. Department of State has different options in terms of applying for a passport. There's different laws in Connecticut that I think, you know, definitely recognize different gender identities and expressions. And I think it's important that we, you know, make that change. And I think the commission did so in a very, you know, as broadly as possible and using as general a term as possible. And I think that's very acceptable, and we should approve that as well.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak before we go ahead and make our motions here?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
I just, you know, to piggyback off of Councilwoman Moranti, I will support all five of the recommendations from the Charter Revision Commission. You know, I do agree with, you know, what I consider the more important changes is obviously the town manager residency requirement. I know we made a change to the police chief a number of years ago. And I think, you know, with this day and age, with technology, that getting in touch and staying in touch is much easier now than it was 30 years ago. So I agree with making the change. And I agree with Councilwoman Moranti. As far as, you know, the language, I know there was a lot of discussion about the gender references. But I think in order to be more consistent with some of the federal and state agencies that offer choices depending on, you know, what you're filling out, I just think for clarification and to be consistent with those state and federal agencies making the change to just clarify to all genders is simple and accomplishes the goal that I think the Charter Revision Commission set out to do. So otherwise, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to contribute tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rocco.
I just want to say I am going to vote in favor of the first four changes we have, which is all of the changes except for the change to clarify gender references. On the basis that I don't think the statement of changing it from referencing the masculine and the feminine to all genders is clarifying. I think that the statement is pretty clear when it lists the only two genders that are there. Specificity is important in clarification. And if we have both genders listed there, I don't see a need to add all genders. Furthermore, I'll go to that and say just because the state and federal governments are passing laws around all this stuff saying that you can change your gender doesn't make it true. The truth is, you were born into your gender. You do not decide what you are. You were born a man, you were born a woman. And I'm not going to buy into the idea that you can change. Just because you could put it in a passport or a license does not make it true. Reality is objective, and it's not for us to decide reality, but rather to interpret it. So for those reasons, I would be voting against that change.
Anybody else want to comment before we go ahead for the motion? Okay, well, again, thank you for your comments. I understand your point of view. I appreciate that you've taken the time to deliberate about it and publicly state how you feel and what your viewpoints are. So at this point, I am going to go ahead and ask for a motion for approval.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Motion to approve the changes that allow for a waiver of the town manager residency requirement as proposed in the Charter Revision Commission's final report.
All those in favor?
A second.
I'm sorry, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Motion to approve the language changes to clarify allowing the assistant town manager to act on behalf of the town manager as proposed in the Charter Revision Commission's final report.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the language to clarify participation in regional health district as proposed in the Charter Revision Commission's final report.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Motion to approve the language changes to clarify director of finance and town treasurer designate me as proposed in the Charter Revision Commission's final report.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Motion to keep the language regarding gender references as currently established in the Town of Plainfield charter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just, I guess, you know, I believe Councilman Rocco's interpretation isn't correct. Let me just start there. You know, I don't think this was, and I don't believe the Charter Revision Commission wanted to get into a discussion or a disagreement about what it says about you if you use the term "all genders" as opposed to masculine and feminine genders. You know, saying "all genders," you know, it's not going to change, you know, the rights that you have or anyone in this room has. I think, you know, getting, I'm just uncomfortable with how personal the remarks were.
Tonight?
Yeah, I think Councilman Rocco, you know, he made it a very, you know, he said personally about how he doesn't agree that he believes there's only two genders, and that's fine. I just think we represent everybody. And I think, you know, in that sense, you know, personally, the way I looked at it, and I said it before, you know, I do think that in the government, whether it's federal, state, there is open-mindedness is not the right word. There's just an openness to allow for more than a masculine or feminine choice on gender. And I just felt that we do need to be somewhat consistent. And it's not like we're identifying or outlining what we feel are the different types of genders. I just feel, you know, we're doing something that's correct, and that's right. And then, you know, the Charter Revision Commission obviously felt strong enough to make this recommendation. And from what, you know, we know, there was significant pushback by the council to get them to reconsider it. And even after that, they still felt it was an important change to make and still kept it in the final report. So I understand this, you know, the way this is written, I understand that, you know, what I say is not going to change any of your minds. It looks like this was already decided. But I don't think it's a decision made to force anyone to admit there's more than two genders. I think it's just a change that's being recommended to be more in line with where we are today as a society. And like I said, specific for me with the state and federal agencies that also allow people to choose something other than a masculine and a feminine gender. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, also, you know, and just a reminder, I guess, when I said last week, you know, back in April, we unanimously approved the Fair Housing Resolution that said, you know, we don't discriminate on the basis of gender identity and expression. And there was no issue with that. And that, to me, certainly reflected that we've recognized that there may be a number of options. Certainly, using that expression does certainly, I think it's implicit within that expression. And in thinking more about that, about the whole issue this week, you know, I really thought of the situation, you know. You know, we're always hiring staff, you know. We have an excellent employee. We've gone through the recruitment and hiring process, and, you know, they're about to begin employment and then ask that they be referred to by the, you know, the "they," third-person pronoun, "they," them, theirs. Do we deny that? I mean, are we going to deny that? I mean, I realize this is a charter, this particular reference is in regard to the language charter and charter. But I think that, you know, this makes a pretty clear statement, you know. I mean, are we a municipality that is going to tell people, "Sorry, we're not going to recognize that here"? And what kind of messes, what kind of hostile environment does that create? I think we really need to think about that very seriously.
Madam Chair. Yes, go right ahead.
I just would like to ask Councilwoman Moranti and Mr. Rocco, who are we excluding by keeping the statement masculine and feminine? Which gender, which group of people are we leaving out?
Like, you want a specific list?
What people that...
Anything's better than nothing.
Well, let's get this resolved. The question is, is there another gender that we are excluding by keeping a gender that by retaining the language that we currently have? Is there another one that you can specify that we are excluding?
For my perspective, it's a BS question to begin with.
Okay.
We all know that there are terms, different terms in masculine, feminine used for gender identification. Whether you will agree with that or not, there is. And a significant portion of, you know, people will use them. You know, if you want, yeah, you want to, we can break and give you 15 minutes. We can come up with specific gender identification markers that we can talk about if you want. But I don't think that's the direction you necessarily look at the going.
No.
Because if I come up with three or four, in doubt, your mind's going to change.
I'm actually happy to hear the discussion. It's just that nobody, and I tried to have this discussion when we had our meeting last week. Nobody was able to explain to me who we're excluding by keeping the statement masculine and feminine. And then my follow-up question to that was, how do you define those other genders? Because I can, you, I can take a set of criteria and define what makes a man describing genitalia, but I won't do that because, you know, I like to think that this show is for kids.
Well, and that's where I think we differ. Because when it comes to gender reference and gender identity, I don't look at it necessarily as, do you have female and male parts? I think it's more, to me, it's more complicated than that. But I don't know a lot about the subject, so I can't get into a dissertation here about gender identification and what qualifies as masculine, feminine, and what other terms can we use. I can get that information. I'm going to need some time. You know, if we want to, you know, even have another special meeting, you know, in the next week to follow up with this question, if it's something that you feel we need to answer, I'll be happy to come back to another meeting. I'm, you know, at this point, without doing some research, I can't answer your question.
Okay, well, we've had, we've had, we've looked at this charter and the changes submitted. We've all looked at the draft report. We've looked at the final report. We've had this document for quite a while. So if any research needed to be done, it should have been done. And we're at this point right now. We're going to, we're going to vote on this final... Excuse me, Mr. Rocco. I'm just going to, I have another thought, just to clarify. Regarding past charter commissions, there have been commissions where the council did not agree on every change that the commission put forward. And that's okay. And those things do happen as you go through these kinds of exercises. And I understand that. And I also understand that not everybody holds the same belief system on every single topic. And I respect the opinion of everybody, whether this is going to go forward. I have sincere doubts about that tonight. I don't believe any minds have been changed. We had a very extended conversation last week at our special, at our special work session regarding this topic. And it was discussed intensively and thoroughly. I haven't heard anything else since then. So I'm going to ask if there are any other comments regarding this.
I just have one more.
Oh, go right ahead, sure.
I think in just, you know, I talked about consistency, you know. As Councilwoman Moranti mentioned, you know, in our fair housing agreement, it does say "all genders" in there. We acknowledged that, and we passed that. And I, you know, we didn't seem to have a problem at that point with it. But, you know, and I think we're just, in that sense, we're trying to have some consistency between some of the things that we're doing. And that's all. I don't think, you know, from my perspective, just not to start a gender identification discussion or, you know, get into some deep philosophical question about that. But, you know, again, I don't think the Charter Revision Commission was doing anything other than trying to be consistent with some of the stuff that we've done as a council and certainly with the state and federal agencies on the same level. So that's all.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
And just to respond to Councilman Rocco, and once again, I feel like, you know, repeating what I said last week, you know, that there is a non-binary option that is given by a number of state and at least one federal agency, the Department of State, in terms of passports.
Okay. It is certainly, as I stated at our last meeting, a complex, evolving discussion regarding genders, non-binary, all genders, masculine and feminine. It's an evolving conversation that's happening nationwide. However, we have, we are making a decision tonight about this document. And there clearly is not enough support to make that change at this time. If in the future, other councils decide to do another revision of our charter, and if at that time, this is a relevant conversation, which it may or may not be because culture changes all the time, then it will be discussed again. But at this point in time, I don't believe there's enough support to accept the change that was put forward by the commission. Are there any other comments before we go ahead and vote?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think the one problem I have with this wording change is that it said "all genders," and "all genders" suggests a plurality. And I think if I said "both genders," I would have been okay with the change. But because I feel that there are two genders, I can't go with "all." I can't go with a plural on genders. So that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, you know, we certainly, we have two different sides to this particular issue. I don't think, and again, I'm not sure it'll change any minds, but I don't think it would be a bad idea to approve this change and let the voters decide whether or not they want it to be part of the charter.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, can we just repeat the motion?
That's what I was going to ask for. That's what I... So we are on our last motion, is that correct? Taking care of all the others?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to keep the language regarding gender references as currently established in the Town of Plainfield charter.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
None.
All right, it's five to two, and the language stays as it is. We do not have any other work before us regarding charter revisions. So at this point, I would like to adjourn this portion of our meeting. We do have a follow-up meeting for some other business that we're going to be taking care of. Thank you very much for your comments and thoughts. I appreciate it for adjourn. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the Plainfield Town Council. Today is Monday, July 24, 2023. It is 7:00 p.m. I'm calling the meeting to order. I will, I'm going to turn the first portion of the meeting over to our town manager, Mike Pauls. He'll introduce the speakers. The specific purpose of this meeting is to look at a demographic and utilization study presentation which was prepared by SLAM. So Michael, if you would like to take over and do the introductions, you'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you, and welcome, everyone. I have the privilege of taking a moment to introduce a newest member to the Board of Education. Kevin Case is the interim superintendent who's with us here tonight. I want to welcome Kevin, and thank you for coming. And certainly offer you a chance to speak or to say whatever you'd like.
Mike, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. It's great, great to see all of you in the matchup warnings and faces, which has been my goal in the past two and a half weeks since I arrived. It's great being here in Plainfield, and I look forward to serving you over the next few months in preparation for your next outstanding superintendent tour. So it's a pleasure to be here. Nice to meet everyone tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Second, I'd like to introduce our presenter is Michael Zubba from SLAM, who is presenting the demographic and utilization study presentation. Tonight is an opportunity to take in the information. It's not designed for action this evening, but more of an intake of information and a Q and A for the end of the presentation. So I'd certainly like to invite Michael up to begin the presentation with the thought and hope that we'd have a very robust conversation and Q and A at the end, but leading into what we hope to be a follow-up presentation and/or special meeting, if you will, sometime in August, maybe August 14. That will all be worked out, but just to have further discussion and potential action sometime in August. So without further delay, I'd like to welcome Michael Zubba. And thank you, Mike, for your presentation tonight.
Excuse me?
Michael, before we begin, just to note that this is a work session, a special presentation for the council and the Board of Education. We do not have a public comment section here this evening. This is an opportunity for the council and the Board of Education to get some information about this report. I'm sure there will be future discussion regarding the information that's here. So I just, I just wanted the folks in the audience to know that we do not have a public comment section tonight. But certainly, you're welcome to listen to the presentation that we're going to have. Okay, thank you so much. Just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be here. It's time I walk through the enrollment projections as well as the capacity and utilization for the individual schools. I see some familiar faces from when we kicked off just a short month ago. We've been working hard on this process and getting a lot of great information, not only from the town, but also from Plainfield Community Schools. So with that, I'll go over our agendas for tonight. We really have it broken down by five key areas. I'm going to go through an overview of enrollment drivers, which is really demographic and housing, our student enrollment analysis and trends, then the enrollment projections themselves, which are ten-year projections by school, by grade. So we look at enrollment at each individual buildings. Then really wrapping up with the capacity and utilization findings. And then in the back of the deck, full body of information as it relates to the detailed enrollment analysis. So I wish the number was a little bigger, but if we ever get full with any questions or comments, just noted, you can squint and see that number in the lower bottom part of the slide. I want to make sure that I'm able to address any questions that you have throughout the presentation. So once I get through it, I'll be glad to go back to any of the individual slides and talk about any of the talking points on there. So with that, we'll get right into our enrollment drivers. And this is just really kind of some of the good pictures. So utilizing the 2020 Centennial Census, the overall population in the community decreased by about 1% or 190 people over the last decade. Unfortunately, the census fielded in the spring of 2020, and that didn't capture a lot of the movement and migration that occurred really at the onset of the pandemic and then about a year and a half afterwards in this community. So it's really just a point in time from the spring of 2020. But nonetheless, it's the best data set that we have to look at total population. From that same data set, we're able to look at the demographic composition of the community. What we do is we really break it down by five age cohorts. So what you'll see on the right is really looking at how your community changed over the last decade. And wherever you see on a chart, the green, especially to the right, is showing that those age cohorts experienced growth over the last 10 years. Wherever you see the pink or red color indicates that those cohorts experienced loss. So we had sizable increases in our 60 to 69 population as well as those that are over the age of 85. We did have losses in our 75 to 79-year-olds as well as our 40 to really 59 or 60-year-old population. We did see increases in our 25 to 34-year-olds shown here. And we had losses in our school age population. But I will say that with the school age population, this is probably the least accurate of any of the enrollment data that we're going to discuss as I get a little further along and we begin talking about the enrollment at Plainfield Community Schools. That's the better data set to be used for that. But we use this information to further break it down into male and female. And then we look at females of childbearing age. In order to do 10-year enrollment projections, we have to be able to have births for five years that we don't have right now. So we want to be able to project what those births look like in the future. And by using females of childbearing age as well as published fertility rates, we're able to project future births out in order to be able to provide those 10-year enrollment projections. But the females of childbearing age each of the last 10 years have declined about 10%. So from 2000 to 2010, about a 10% drop. And from 2010 to 2020, about an 8% drop. That matches up well with what we see from the overall birth. So what we're showing on the black line, those are actual births reported through the Connecticut Department of Health. We have births through the 2020 year. However, they're always marked as preliminary because the state goes through this auditing process and then fills a full audit. It is not finalized yet. One of the things that jumped out to me was just over the last decade, the births in Plainfield have been remarkably steady, averaging about 149. When I look at the last five years, that averaged 146. What we saw throughout analyzing different communities, and I've worked in many throughout my 20-plus years, but really looking at data in the last several years, we did see in many communities in Connecticut where we had a birth drop-off in 2020, corresponding with the pandemic and a big birth bump in 2021. We did not see that here, but your birds have been really steady, averaging 146 over the last five years. We did three different models to inform our enrollment projection models. Especially with the birth model, we ran a high, medium, and low. Our high model used slightly higher fertility rates, showing that there would be a slight increase, but nothing larger than you've seen recently. It's really looking at about 150 to about 160 births, averaging 160 over that year of projections. Your medium model, shown in green, averages 148. So what that model does is just basically take the last five years demographically and project it forward to about the same level that you've been at. And then the low model showing a slight decrease there in births. A big driver for student enrollment is student immigration into communities. And a lot of built-out communities, you really, especially here in the Northeast and in Connecticut, we look at housing sales. We'll talk about future development a little bit later on. But we really look at the churn of the housing market. You peaked for your annual sales, similar to many communities back pre-recession. So before that big housing collapse of 2007 or so, you were well up above 350 or so sales. And then that dropped off, similar to many communities nationwide. And then your housing really kind of stabilized for a period of time. With the onset of the pandemic, we saw an uptick to just over 300 total sales. But then that number dropped back down a little bit in 2022 to 275. And we're estimating, based on five months of data, a full year of about 225. But that'll be subject to how the summer market goes. But really, what we see here is that you didn't get above the pre-recession total number of sales. Many communities did. But also, you didn't have a big drop-off in 2022 where some communities had that larger drop-off. So you had a bit of an uptick. It stayed elevated. But now you're really kind of getting back down to where you were, I'm going to say, in that 2015, 2018 housing activity level. I won't get into all of the different drivers on price, but I think what jumps out to me is that prices are at an all-time high. And this is that, looking at your median sale price and all of the housing data we purchase through Warren Group, which is basically a clearinghouse of all MLS data. So for the last two years, and this is including year-to-date of '23, averaging $250,000 for a single family. That's up from $198,000 pre-pandemic. So a considerable jump, similar... So considerable jump, similar to a lot of our other communities throughout the state. Condo prices, I did not have enough of sample for 2023, but nonetheless, 2022 is up considerably about 30K over where it was in 2019. And that increase in price could also be some of the factors as well as a smaller inventory, which is causing this slowdown in the local housing market. Going through your building permits as published through the D E C B, Department of Economic and Community Development, you've averaged about 13 annually over the last decade. It's been a very flat line there, but speaking with the town planning department, I do know that there's several projects that are in, we'll call it, the housing pipeline. Getting an understanding of those is important because typically, especially some of the different types of development, don't get baked into our enrollment projection model. So we have to go through, provide multipliers to look at that residential development and understand what those approved developments will bring to the table as far as school-age children. So I'll begin at the top, talking about the J and A, J and S development. That's 54 units. Those are all four bedrooms. It's approved, but construction hasn't really begun in earnest on the units yet. We also have the SR development at 125 West Main Street. That's a total of seven units. Those are mostly studio one-bedroom. Those units lie in the Linden catchment. The prior project, the JMH development, lies in Toflon. 169 and Trumbull Meadows, which is really kind of a similar project, and I believe it's by the same developer. At 161 Camp is a condo with carriage-style development. Those are two-bedroom units. They'll be detached units with a common area. So we added those 22 units there and then 68 and 70 Whitey Street, also known as Laurel Court, 19 units there, 17 one-bedroom. Those feed Linden and the prior development also feeds Toflon as they're very close in proximity to each other. So what we want to be able to do is really kind of look at where they're at in the community, get a good understanding of these different projects. I mentioned earlier, any development that is really less than five DU's or dwelling units in scale is already kind of included within our models themselves, just how we can do enrollment projections. So really, I'm kind of focusing on these main ones to be able to add in to our construction pipeline. All projects are approved, but construction hasn't started in earnest. So that has us pushing the student generation out a little bit as far as when they begin to hit the school system here. But looking at the J and S development, using ESI multipliers and examining some of your local developments, we're estimating about 50 public school-age children. A majority of those in elementary school, 24, 11 middle, 15 high school. SR development, we're estimating three school-age children there. Trumbull Meadows, 13 with six, three and four for elementary, middle, and high school respectively. And then Laurel Court at five with two, one, two. So all totaled these new developments that are approved but not yet built, they'll add about 71 school-age children into the school system. So getting into our enrollment analysis, one of the things that jumps out at me is just, and you'll hear, talk about it, it's just seeing a lot of data, seeing a lot of enrollment across different communities in Connecticut. Your enrollment has been very flat over the last several years. You've had the COVID dip like many have had, where especially where we began examining it, we could see where your elementary enrollment took a bit of a hit, similar to many communities where that K and first-grade cohort in that 2020 year, typically smaller. So we typically see subdued or lower than expected, I'll call it, elementary enrollment as a result of the beginning of the pandemic. Your middle school, shown in the green portion of the stacked bar chart, really unaffected over the last few years, pretty steady there enrollment overall. And then in the high school as well, really not much of a flip there. Over the last five years, the elementary pre-K five, and we're showing pre-K in that red color on the bottom, just disaggregated for simplicity. Pre-K five averaged just under 1,080 students. Middle school averaged 540 students and high school averaged 695 students over the last five years. And this, I won't spend a lot of time. This is just for the slide deck in port itself, just looking at your different grade cohorts as they move through the system. Looking at your pre-K enrollment trends, your pre-K enrollment has grown over time. Looking back about 15 years, averaging about 40, 45 students. You had a peak, and I believe it was 17, 18 of just over 140. With the pandemic in 2020, you had a much lower pre-K enrollment that year, but over the last two years, that enrollment has recovered and it's about where you were at for an average over the last several years. We then broke down the K five historic enrollment, and we try to do this separate from the pre-K. When examining pre-K, we know it's been in every building, but it varies in the number of classrooms and students. So to get a really good trend to understand that baseline demographic, especially for the individual elementary schools, we look at just the K five enrollment. And you can see it's been really steady. Around 1,100, we've had that little bit of a dip. But examining really the individual schools, we see where Linden experienced a decline of about 70 students over the last 10 years, and that's shown in this green color here, looking back at 2012 to where we're at today, just under 350. We also see where Toflon has had some variations in the overall enrollment, but right around that same mark that Linden is over the last few years, just under 350. And then Wheeler has been pretty stable over the last few years, averaging 275 students. It did have a little bit of a dip this past year due to a smaller fifth-grade cohort there. And looking at the high school and middle school enrollment, I touched on a lot of this, so it's just really examining that. The overall middle school trend has been extremely flat over the last few years as well as the high school. And when I say extremely flat, that's coming from the viewpoint of looking at a lot of different enrollment, and some communities are shrinking, some communities are growing. We're really not seeing much change over the last part of the seven, eight years here in this community. We began looking at net migration. So what we want to understand is just not the enrollment trend where we're talking about enrollment's pretty flat. Here's what we're seeing. That's kind of the upper level. That's like 10,000 feet. We're digging down as we work through this presentation, getting a little bit more detail, a little more specific analysis. So what we want to look at is we want to look at the overall dynamics between grade cohorts from one year to the next. Are those cohorts shrinking? Are those cohorts growing? What this net migration analysis does is it counts for both student new registrations as well as new to leave or withdraw from the system. So what we do is we begin to kind of break it down for the K five elementary cohort. You can see where over, by and large, you have net immigration. So we're looking at these green bars. We're seeing a positive number up top. Over the last decade, you've averaged plus 13 students annually. Three of the last five years, except for 2020, where you had a loss of 13 students. They've really been in alignment with that average. But what we did see in 2022, 23 is that you had a net immigration of over 40 students. So that has been the highest that you had on record, and you have about 15 years of data to look back on. But it's kind of on par with where you were at in 18, 19, 19, 20, where you had a lot of immigration for new students or, better yet, new registrations as well as retention of existing students. Looking at the middle school, you have a little bit more fluctuation from year to year there, where you can see you have some red bars in the negative, but you have by and large, green bars in the positive. Taking an average over the last decade is a plus six for net migration. So really, on average, you're adding students into the system. But what we did see over the last few years was that in that pandemic year, we had a very small positive migration in, but that rebounded in '21, '22 at plus 22, similar to the year two years prior. But in '23, or '22, '23, we had a large net out migration there for the middle school. So looking at from one year to next this past year, we lost middle school students in this community. The high school, by and large, had averages net out migration, nowhere near the levels over the really kind of 15, 13 years ago. Here, it's more so stabilized, but what jumped out to me was that even throughout and coming back out of the pandemic, your net migration kind of moved up, even though you're not positive, you're not losing the numbers that you were losing just prior to the pandemic. So our next level of analysis that we look at and getting down even a little bit more specific than that, we track new to district students. So every student in the state of Connecticut is provided a state ID. It's their unique identifier that follows them throughout their entire school age experience. What we do is we take that identifier and we run it through a formula where we look to see if a student with that same, or that same student was in the school district in a prior year. So if we know that that student, based on their IDs, weren't in the school system a prior year, we can now really kind of phone in on our, what we call them as, new to district students. So this prior slide looks at both the in and the out. This slide gives us a really good understanding of what that in is and what grade, what grade levels they're coming in at. And then on the next slide, we'll talk about what schools. So what jumped out to me in going through this analysis, and we do this for every one of our projects, back in 2020, 2021, no surprise, first year with the pandemic, the numbers were much lower. We're looking at 19, 20 as that kind of baseline beforehand, so a loss of about 30, but movement of students, no surprise there. But we did see a really good marked rebound in '21, '22, getting up to about 177, almost 180 students. And then in '22, '23, a little bit of a dip, but still elevated above that 19 level and well above that 2021 level. And you know, as we kind of work our way through this, we identify 2021 kind of becomes that anomalous year of data, and how do we handle that as part of our, as part of our enrollment projections? But having done probably 70 projections since the pandemic, we've developed a really good methodology there. Next, we began looking at the different grade levels. So looking at the middle school overall, net migration was down, but not as much in 2020, 21, not as much mobility there. It did rebound, similar to the district as a whole, it did rebound. But then in '22, '23, aligning with that net out migration, I saw the new to district students, so the inflow of new students dropped off to just below pandemic levels. So your new to district middle school students was below that of the, was below that of the pandemic. And then looking at the high school, we saw an increasing net new to district students overall. Below was in the, in 2020 with the pandemic, then you added a dozen students and then got up to just over 50 in '22, '23. And when we look at the historic data for that, really the largest cohort there was that ninth-grade cohort, so kids coming in from eighth to ninth that weren't previously in the school system. Looking at the individual elementary schools to see if there's different trends. Are we seeing greater levels of immigration in one of the elementary school persons? The next, we took an average of four years of data that we have, and it really kind of broke out pretty evenly with all the schools, really around about a third of new to district students. So we don't see a lot of drivers in one over the other. In some communities, we see individual schools that are significantly higher than others, and that helps inform how we begin modeling those individual projections. But here overall, we did not see a lot of differences. We did see, and looking at the elementary though, that big drop-off similar in 2021, but good rebound in '21, '22, and then staying at that elevated level. So '22, '23 was really similar to your pre-pandemic levels. So we know we got back to that, sort of that migration trend that was prior to the pandemic, those couple stable years there in a row. We also learned data from Connecticut EdSite to look at the student body, the specifically the racial and ethnic composition, going back, and this data went back to 2013, 14, about 25% minority in the district to 22, 23, 37%. So growth of about 12% over that period of time. Looking at the other part of the major, of the realm of students, so this really other, we call it other public school enrollment, it's really Plainville resident students that attend a public school that's not their community school district. So we looked at five years of data, on average, about 100 students attend a public school outside of Plainville, with about a third of those going to the Connecticut Career and Technical Schools, and about a third going to Crepe, and about just over 50% going to the Magnet and Choice Programming and Part for Public Schools. All right, I'll jump right in to the enrollment projections. Just a primer, we use the cohort survival methodology. It's the methodology that state requires if you're going to do an instruction project. We do make modifications to it, especially when we have development that doesn't fit within the curve that has happened recently. It's based on persistency ratios, so really the growth of student cohorts from one year to the next. A ratio of one means that a class of 100 kindergarters, when they moved up to first grade, you still have 100 kindergartners. A class of 100, a ratio of 1.05 means that if you have 100 kindergartners, they resulted in 105 first graders. So that is based on, a lot of different information gets rolled into that. But that really is kind of against to be the backbone of our modeling. Those persistency ratios account for really everything that I went over, but maybe at a little greater level of detail. It's your housing stock, it's the residential development, it's economic conditions, and it's the student mobility and transfers in and out of the system. And then all the kind of stock and tenure and housing conditions really begin to inform this information. But also, I will note that any changes of programming, especially as you project out 10 years, can definitely have an impact on the individual school enrollment that we're projecting. Our pre-K enrollment, we're holding that at 120 students annually over the next decade, so that'll average 120. Our housing assumptions, so that student generation that I talked about, we added those incrementally, starting two years out in our enrollment projections, and look to be able to get full build-out on those by year seven of our enrollment projections. So we really had a slower build-out of those units based on discussions with the town planning department. Our high projections, we use the high birth projections, surprise, surprise there. Our student migration averages 2.9%, which is above the recent historic average. When we calculated the historic average for student migration, we left out 2021 because it is an anomaly, and that average for five years, not counting 2021, is 2.5%. So the high projections are above your last five-year average excluding the first year of the pandemic. The median projections assumes the median births and uses a student migration of 2.6, which is really in alignment with that historic average. And then our low projections, you need the low birth, no surprise there, and uses a migration of 2.1, which is below that historic average. I won't spend a lot of time talking about this. We could use it as an eye test, but there's a lot of numbers on here. These are persistence ratios. This could be able to show. Birth decay is the one I'll talk about. So as we look at kindergarten enrollment, we always go off of births five years prior, and state legislatures now change the date for that. So we'll be redoing our, redoing our projection, but we don't see a major shift other than the first year. But we have to get a better understanding of what that may look like. But overall, your birth K ratio, so births five years ago versus kindergarten today, really about one. You see some ups and downs. You had some anomalously low years, you know, including 17, 18, as well as the pandemic. And by and large, I think your average is about 0.99. So really, it's a community that aligns well with families that actually lay down roots and begin to have children there, and balance that with those that are moving in with kids in tow. The estimates of migration, where I began calculating those numbers I was talking about on the prior slide, are really shown here. You'll see where even leading, even prior to that pandemic, we had estimates of migration, 2.7, 4.5, and then the last two years have been right around 2.5 and 2.25. So you've had a real strong rebound after this loss of students in 2020, 21. As part of our enrollment projection, we run three different models. I started doing this in response to the Great Recession. So in 2005 and '06, we're running enrollment projections, feeling pretty good, and then this massive housing recession hit, and anybody who was doing enrollment projections was instantly wrong. So we, you know, at that time, years ago, again, saying, well, we're going to model the high, the medium, below, and kind of really look at the conditions and see which aligns best with what we're seeing. And that served us very, very well, especially as we went into that pandemic, and you know, that was a big surprise, and you know, a lot of the projections dipped down there, and that was first year. So we've run three different models. The high is shown in the blue line on top. The green is showing the median model, and the red is showing the low model. All three models are in really strong agreement in the first five years. So we have a range of about 100 students overall, going from 2,270 to about 2,365. And as you project out a little further, so really enrollment projections, the state school construction grant project uses eight-year projections. As you start to get out a little further, it really is a function of some of the assumptions that you're building in. So what we're seeing here is that, still yet again, looking at the scale of this, we're looking at a range of about 2,200 to 2,470 students with that median model, right around 2,333. Based on what we've looked at from the future housing, the housing conditions, as well as the demographic data, we think the median model really aligns best with that, and that's the one that we use for the capacity and space planning, which I'll talk about in a few slides that are forthcoming. But overall, that median model shows about a 1.2% growth in the next five years, and then about a total of just under 2% overall. So really, really kind of flat enrollment across the entire system. And this is similar to the historic enrollment that I showed earlier, just with the different grade levels disaggregated. So looking at the K5, shown in this bluish green color, that's projected to average 961 K5 students over the next 10 years, with a peak of about 985 students. The middle school enrollment is projected to increase pretty modestly at about 2%. Peak at just over 560 in 26, 27, and average of just under 540 for the next 10 years. And high school is projected to average just over 700, with the peak enrollment of 735 students in 2030, 31. This is just for information to packet, I won't spend a lot of time, but you can see all the individual projections by grade, as well as the percent changes over various periods of time. Looking at the individual elementary school projections, so what we did is we factored in the location of that future housing, as well as the local demographics. Over the first five years, we're projecting Linden to decrease by about 1%, so a very small drop. Tofolone increases by just over 4%. Right around the midpoint, you're on the cusp of that Tofolone of about 390 students. Where we began to grow to just over 400 students is where I talked about those housing developments getting completed, getting to maturity, COs issued, families move in, and you start to see students generated at all. Takes a little bit of time, it's not instantaneous. So that's where you begin to see this uptick in the enrollment. And then Wheeler, we do see an uptick in the next year. We have a very small fifth grade cohort, just over 30 students, that's being replaced by a larger fifth grade cohort. So we see this immediate uptick in that first year, and then overall averaging 280 to mid 290s enrollment overall. All right, I'll turn it over to the capacity and utilization component. So running concurrently with the enrollment projection work, we were working with Sam and the public schools staff in order to be able to inventory classrooms, get an understanding of the types of uses in the various spaces, counting up full-size instructional rooms, what does the scheduling look like? So we have a pretty good process. I do probably seven or eight, maybe more in some given years, enrollment and utilization studies, which is the utilization component. So I have a really good eye for this type of data. So what we want to do is we want to get a good understanding of the total full-size classrooms, those that are used for instructional spaces, as well as those that support specialized classrooms and functions throughout the buildings, get an understanding of the loading levels there, and then begin looking at different efficiency factors. So with elementary schools, my experience is that when you group by street address, you group by neighborhood, you never are achieving 100% loading or max capacity because kids just typically don't come packaged that way in neighborhoods. It's not all clean, where you're going to have 50, 50, 50, 50 kids per grade. Demographics are at play. And some of the, some of the Magnet and Choice districts where there's administrative placement of students, you could achieve operation at 95% utilization. But overall, if you're K4, pre-K, pre-K4, pre-K5, pre-K6 even, you're typically around an 80 to 90% effective efficiency. So we go through this process of taking our loading levels of 20, multiplying it by 85% utilization. We get, with that, we get 17 students per classroom, which aligns with what the recent historic loading has been, and that gives us an operational planning capacity at each of the elementary schools. So Linden's operational planning capacity is 421, Tofolone's 394, Wheeler's at 309. This also accounts for the class sizes that are in pre-K. When we compare that to the 22, 23 enrollment, all the buildings are operating just over 90%. So very well utilized with Tofolone at 95% on the higher end. The middle schools and high schools are a little bit different of a, of a process. Whereas in an elementary school, children are typically home-ruled for the majority of the day under a grade-level instructional classroom. For the middle school and high school, we need to do much deeper dive, especially into the scheduling, how the rooms are being utilized. So looking at the middle school, we have 48 full-size classrooms, 31 are used for instructional, nine are used for special ed, the rest are used for support spaces, that's art, music, specials. We also have health classrooms in there that aren't included as part of those major instructional uses, but still a major part of the curriculum. For the high school, 55 with 43 used as instructional classrooms. Here, we use a loading level of 21, but we apply efficiency factor of 75% to account for those natural down periods, just due to scheduling between the rooms. There's only one high school that I've ever seen, and it's in Stanford, Connecticut, that their efficiency factor is 100% because they schedule that building seven out of seven periods of the day. So there is no teacher prep in any rooms, there's no downtime in any rooms. Everybody floats around for concierge space, and they use every classroom in that small building to the greatest level of efficiency. It really is a, really is something to, to see. But overall, with this analysis, we found the operational planning capacity for the middle school at 643 students, based on the enrollment of 22, 23, 543, 84% utilization. High school, 684, operating at 88% based on the 22, 23 enrollment. Getting into the individual schools now, this is where I take those tenure enrollment projections and I marry them up to our capacity, and we create this utilization curve going forward. The enrollment projected at Linden is really 380 to 390 students with a 420 operational capacity. So looking at utilization from high 80s to low 90s, really well utilized over the next 10 years. Tofolone, especially with the housing that's coming into that pipeline, we can see where there's different points in time where that's geeking up above our operational capacity overall, but really highly utilized. And this, especially in the latter years, is going to depend on the construction activity where we added those multipliers in, and the timing of that, it could either shift a little bit earlier if the construction happens sooner than we're estimating, or it could shift a little bit later if the construction lags a little bit more. But overall, looking ahead, we see that there could be some enrollment pressures coming down the road, especially in the last five years of our projected utilization. Wheeler with our operational planning capacity of 310, and an enrollment of 280 to 290 going forward. We're looking at a high level of utilization there, anywhere between the low to mid 90s. Looking, and I forgot to mention, because I made my footnote very small, and not included in the capacity for Linden's school is leased space. There's one classroom, maybe an office or two, that are fully grant-funded, early childhood program, that's separate from the students that are in the building itself, so we just excluded that. One classroom from our utilization analysis. And the same was done for the middle school, where there was about 4,700 square feet that are leased out, so that's about five classrooms. That space got deducted from the capacity and utilization analysis as well. But overall, looking at some fairly flat middle school enrollment, with our operational capacity of 640 students, we're looking at an overall utilization anywhere between the mid to high 80s. And then with the high school, an operational planning capacity of 778, very well utilized overall. We have one year where utilization actually creeps up from 731, 735 to 94, 95%. So all of the instructional rooms and full-size classrooms in that building are, are being used very well going forward. And before I get into the Q and A, I just have a small, short summary of your findings. So overall, the elementary school system, the pre-K5 is projected to average 1,008 students with a peak of 1,106 in 32, 33. Your overall operational capacity is 1,124, so not a tremendous amount of headroom there, but enough to accommodate the students that we're projecting. And then for Tofolone, the tenant zone, especially later on, depending on the timing of that construction, you may want to be able to look at either flexing some support rooms to get additional instructional classrooms, or use the school choice program to be able to provide some enrollment relief if needed, or potentially go through a rezoning process should the enrollment not be able to, not be able to accommodate in the existing building. Then with the middle school, just an average utilization of 84% over the next 10 years, with roughly 100-seat surplus across 31 classrooms. You have room to accommodate within those instructional classrooms, any additional bubble or students should something change condition-wise. And then the high school is projected to be very well utilized, over 90% over the next decade. And I think my takeaway in, in kind of reviewing all the data and doing this work over the last month is that we do a lot of studies where we talk about rightsizing the portfolio of buildings to the enrollment and future enrollment. When I begin looking at your utilization numbers and seeing that, it tells me, it tells me that right now your district is really kind of right-sized with the buildings, as well as the moment that you have for today, as well as, you know, looking ahead for the next 10 years. With that, I'll turn it over, if there's any questions, I'd have to go back to any of the slide and stuff.
Okay, well, thank you so much. That's a lot of information, certainly, and we're certainly appreciative of the, the level of detail that's provided in the report, because it gives us a very clear overview picture as to what, you know, what possible projections are for enrollments at all of our schools. So I do appreciate that. I'll open it up now for the council or board. Do you have any questions that you would like to ask at this point in time? I know there's a lot of information, but anybody on the council?
I have a question.
So, and it's, it's from the town manager. Because this 161 Camp Street subdivision, it was my understanding that was a Bristol subdivision? And the only, only interest we had in it is how the traffic was going to be coming out into Camp Street. Isn't that the Bristol subdivision?
I don't believe so. I'll get clarification from Mark, but that came from the town. Which I believe is, is located within, within our side. It must be more than one development. That other development in Bristol is more of a senior housing type. But I'll get clarification that there's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Rebecca?
Yes, I have a question, just on the calculations for the new development. So 161 Camp Street, we know that there's going to be 50 units. And I see here you have 54 units, and they're all four bedrooms. And the projection from that part of the development is 50 children in the top lot. And then I see two bedrooms, I'm sorry, 22 units, two bedrooms each, and that is a projection of 13 in the top one. I was just wondering how that calculation was, because we're so close to capacity there, and it seems a little bit on the lower end.
Yeah, we purchase demographic multipliers. So what we do is we look at, we look at the yield of development, look at the yield of housing in town, but then we also weigh that against our housing multipliers. So when we use the housing multipliers, the 50 students really comes out from, at any point in time, there's going to be 50 students there, but there's going to be an influx of ins and outs, right? So you may have, when the units are fully mature, you're going to have a yield of 50, but as you lead up to that, you're going to have a smaller amount. And then as the units get a little bit older, you would get a little bit less. So that becomes the average yield of those units over time.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions from the council or the board? Any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The shift that you mentioned from the age five, kids have to be age five to go in the kindergarten.
Yeah.
That rule started. How exactly do you see that affecting enrollment? That a bump? Is it going to go, do you anticipate an increase or decrease, and, and where approximately?
So the, it starts with 24, 25 is my understanding, and it goes from December 31st to September 1st is the cutoff now. What we're, what we're hearing and what we're talking about a lot is that we think that we may have a little bit lower K enrollment just for one year, but much higher pre-K or request for pre-K seats. Because if you have a child that typically would have gone, and they're in that September to say December window, sometimes you have families just say, we're going to enter at six, or enter when they're a little bit more mature anyway. So we're seeing it, and what we're hearing is that it may put a little more pressure on pre-K, get some more pre-K students in that first year or two, but then ultimately level off is kind of what our thinking is on it, where the, the K really won't change, but there'll just be a lesser amount for the coming year, which is the unknown. Anytime there's changes and things like that, parents, especially if they have a kindergartner, I know I went through with mine, because I, both my kids were born in, you know, later in the year, I exlete summer and fall. So it was always like a big decision on like when, when you send them. So, you know, we see that just being one year of a little bit of a blip or uncertainty, because we don't know, it's, it's uncharted waters here in Connecticut of that change. But not really having, you know, a long-term impact, because eventually you're going to come as a kindergartner, which is how is that going to look in that first year when it's implemented?
Thank you.
Yes, Becky?
So just to really get, to make sure that everybody's on the same page about, when you look at the middle school and you're talking about utilization, and this is obviously very jargony and not something that most of us are used to dealing with, and we look at it and it says it's in the 80 percentile. I could see people thinking, only 80 percentile, why isn't it higher? Why can't we, I mean, so can you give us a little more about like, what is average? What is, you know, what, what should we expect?
Yeah. Typically, for middle schools, what we see is that it's right around that 85 to 90% is a well-utilized building. What this tells me is that within your instructional rooms, if you do have kids that are in addition to what we're projecting, it's not going to really call for additional classrooms, but more so, they're going to be absorbed in additional grade-level instructional rooms. So rather than pushing your class sizes to a maximum, you have room within the building to absorb students, but you don't have a tremendous amount of room in the building should you get a massive influx of students. You always have to have a little bit of a healthy, especially at a middle school and high school, a little bit of a healthy free seats, so to speak, for planning purposes. But this tells me that the building's pretty well utilized. I've gone through a lot of buildings, I've worked in a lot of districts where that number is typically in the 70s, especially in Connecticut. And when I'm in districts that this number is in the 90s, they're always talking about, wow, pinched, what, where should we add space physically onto the footprint of the building? So this tells me you don't need to, you don't have any extra, you don't have a tremendous, you don't have any extra space, you have room to absorb students, but you're nowhere near having to add any space onto that existing building. So it's kind of fits well with what that enrollment is for the building.
Yes, Mr. Azar.
And this might be more for the town manager, but talking about some of these developments, we have the White Oak project, which I, I know is a little bit behind some of these other projects we're talking about, but maybe when you talk to the town planner, is there any way that we, or any reason to incorporate that development in some of these numbers? You know, I know it was a mix of, you know, one, two-bedroom mostly, but, you know, and then again, I believe it's going to be a little bit out there in the future compared to some of these that are on this list, but since you have to talk to them anyway.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mark. I'm not sure why that, that might, it might, maybe it was considered, but why it didn't make the list, but we'll check that out.
Alseth?
Yes.
Anybody else on the board or the council that has a question or a comment? Okay, again, thank you so much, it's a lot of information. I'm sure we're going to be going through this and digesting it, and I would expect there'll be future conversations about the entire topic. Oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca, I didn't, you're kind of behind the pole when I look for you over here. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry, one more. How kind of utilization, especially in the top line district will be over 100%? Or you're, when you're looking at the utilization, are you looking just at building square feet more than classrooms? Because I heard you say swing classrooms, but I'm wondering how many and like, what the permanency of that would be? Because right now, there's not too much extra space over there, and we're looking at 421 students, which is, you know, a pretty big increase for now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk through that. Now, that's a really good question. So, you know, just kind of, so with Tofolon, where we're looking to get up over, and I'm sorry if I'm in everybody's way, I got to point a little better. We're just over 400. It's really going to come down to where those children fall in grade levels, right? At that point in time. So this is projecting out a number of years. You have families moving in and out. We're really accurate, projected in total, but sometimes at the individual grade level, when you get past five years, there's some wobble there in the data. So in looking at that, it's really going to come down to, you have 29 full-size rooms, you're using 22 for instruction, you have two for special ed, the remainder are art, music, support rooms, resource rooms. Not much there. You can do one of two things, and this is what we typically recommend. This 85% and that 394 represents a class size of 17. If you use a class size of 20, and you're lucky enough where, where that pressure is in that grade, say it's in the third or fourth or fifth grade, where you feel comfortable at 20, you can work towards loading that, those classrooms a little bit more, getting that class size up a little bit more to be able to stem the, stem the push of students. Or you could look at if there's a way to be able to put a resource room floated around, use that extra full-size classroom to make this 23 instructional rooms. But when I look at a ratio of 22 to 29, it tells me that there really isn't much other support space there. So you probably want to look at, especially with some room at Linden and some room at Wheeler, if there's an opportunity there to be able to either rezone or utilize space in one of your other buildings a little better rather than taking away a resource room or a support room in the building. So you have three different strategies there. If you can, if it's one year, you can kind of, you know, get by with one less resource room, do so. If you can add some, you know, add to the class size a little bit, do so. So you have kind of a, a different menu of options. I just wanted to get some solutions when you got there down the road.
Yes, Cassandra, go ahead.
Were you finished?
Are you all set?
All set. Um, I, we had a situation with Wheeler needing to have more children temporarily because of having the, um, the new construction. And we had to have, some kids were offered from other districts. It was just offered to the families, our first come, first need phases. If those students wanted to just temporarily go through Wheeler as opposed to Linden because we had more room at one. So I think our school district or community is pretty good at adapting to those temporary situations where we've had, you know, offers, and then the families that can do, and the families that, you know, want to, you know, want to stay in that district have had, always have that opportunity. So it's, it's nice, I think, that we've all, it's been pretty adaptable.
Yeah, trace is a great way to do it.
Okay.
This, this is for us here, what, what are the next steps? Like?
Well, again, you know, I don't think we've quite gotten there yet. We've just received this report tonight. And I would like to, at our next council meeting or before it, as the council gets together, decide if we would like to have a follow-up work session with the, the Board of Education. There may be more questions that come out after folks get a chance to study the information. And I think that would probably be appropriate to do something to that end.
When's the next council meeting?
20, August 21st is our next scheduled, regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Alsat?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else? This will be your last chance, at least for this evening, to ask questions, make comment. We can certainly follow up as the weeks progress, and we get a chance to, to look at some of these things. But if there are no other questions or comments from either the council or the board, I'll conclude the report. Thank you again so very much for all your work that you did. It's certainly tremendously appreciated. I know it will be most helpful in future planning for, for playing with public schools. All right, thank you again. At this point, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No moves.
That's good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again.